And you have, and the zoom's on, you have the camera on.
Yep, I will start the recording. All right.
Start it right.
According to the computer, right?
I can look them all right in the eye right here.
Okay. Recording in progress.
Be quick. Okay.
Did it play over the speakers?
Yes, she did, thank you. I'll tell you about it later.
Okay, so we can hear the speakers over the mic.
Um, so you need to go to the laptop and the little light button, you need to switch it to the, to the jack. You've got it on the computer, speakers, if you don't switch it to the jack, then nobody can hear on sound.
Okay, so did you, sorry, did you?
I just clicked on that mic, that's all.
Oh, okay. Different. And the microphone by, not, the Logitech brick? Or the?
No, on the Zoom platform.
Yep.
Down below, on the left side, there's a mic button.
Right.
Click it, and there's a little arrow, and it gives you options.
Yes, the options are microphone, Logitech, brick, microphone, array?
And the array, I believe, is the one that plugs into the computer.
Okay, and that's the one that's, that's checked, okay, so that's the one that's checked. Can you hear Brian by any chance?
Testing.
Okay, so it is on the right.
But when you hit record, it's through the speakers.
Well, this is always rough when I give this a go, so. Stop the recording and then start again and see if that corrects, that's corrected.
Um, yeah, you can hit pause. It'll say pause recording.
Should be down here, right? Stop, stop.
That's pause recording.
Recording stopped.
Okay, I can hear that from your D phone, but not from the speakers.
Okay, there's the mic button, and you need to play with the options to get it to whatever the mic jack is, it's whatever it plugged in. Well, two settings to it, there's a top setting, and then there's a bar, and then there's a lower setting.
Testing, testing. Let's play.
Okay. Play.
Recording in progress.
Okay, again, so.
Can you send me a picture of the options, and I will, or can you FaceTime me? You gotta plug the jack in the right hole on the right side of the laptop, there's two spots. And you want the one with the headphones.
Sorry, Brian.
Here, you want me to get out of your way?
Need to grab my glasses.
Oh, shoot.
Brian, did I get it in the right jack?
I only see one plug in, that's the headphones. Yeah, it's got the little headphone.
Yeah, it's the one with the headphones, yep, so that's in the right jack. Okay, I'm gonna send you.
Did you, in the back, in the black box, did you turn on the main power and the, and the speaker power?
Yep, both, both are on.
Okay, so if you send me a picture of your options, that will be easier than me trying to tell you what it is, because I just know it from memory.
Okay, let me. Okay, so I'm gonna hang up and then send that to you. No worries. I wish I was more helpful here. Every time I try to figure, every time I do figure out some sort of software, it just changes every four months anyway, but so. By the time I get good at it, I'll switch it all around.
So, they're no longer supporting Windows ten, and they keep telling me I need to get a new computer to go to Windows eleven, what a rip off. Do you understand this? School impact fees?
The what?
School impact fees, what does that mean?
School, school impact fees are, I think they started them in the nineties, and what they're meant to do is to pay for capital infrastructure. And that just means that for every new home or new dwelling that is built, they pay a one-time fee to the school district they're in. And that money has to go to either land or buildings. So they can build new schools with more people.
Well, it says that we passed it on December fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
So that's when it'll go in the council.
So it hasn't passed.
You're making a recommendation to them, yes, no, it hasn't been changed since.
Well, it just says here it was passed.
Oh, so that is the ordinance that you're reviewing, and it's not signed and executed yet. Yes, so that's, that's the proposal, and if they sign it, that's the day it'll be signed and passed.
So, okay, so we're, we're assuming that was passed.
Yes, yep, so I've written it as it, okay, so it looks like. Okay, it's the options for same as system. It's written, and you're deciding whether or not it should go to them for approval. Speakers real tax.
Did we already approve that?
Testing, testing. No, so you could pick a different date, like if you think it needs to go in effect today, you can make a motion today.
No, I just didn't understand what, what we did or didn't do, or when we did.
So that's the proposal from the school district.
Okay.
And if you disagree with the school district, you can make any recommendation you want.
Well, that's between us and them, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, can you try pausing it, see if it comes in over the speakers?
And then. Recording stopped.
Starting it again?
Recording in progress.
So you heard it there?
I heard it on here, yeah.
We rolled that, we opened all the windows and just yell everything that. And make sure your speakers are on? Okay. All right, bang the gavel and get going, huh? Okay, I call this planning commission public meeting to order at seven oh nine P M. Uh, please take the time to be sure that your phones are off, and, uh, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the role of the planning commission is to hold workshops to review and make recommendations to the city council on all manners of policy and legislative activities. In some cases, we act as a quasi judicial board for land use cases, which can then be appealed to either the council, the hearings examiner, or court. Can the, uh, the planning director please take roll call?
Sharon Watt.
Present.
Brian Mattson.
Present.
Cliff Georgoff.
Present.
Okay, at this time, I ask that any member of the public who wishes to give testimony for items not on the agenda, please approach the microphone at this time. Travis, if somebody raises their hands in cyberspace, you'll know, and, or will I see that, or?
Uh, no, you'll need to keep an eye on it.
Okay. Okay, I don't see anybody yet, but, um, still probably have time at some point, we can squeeze you in if you come later. All right, at, uh.
Agenda approval.
There we go. Do, does anybody want to, was everyone able to look at the minutes from the, I'm sorry.
Agenda approval first.
Let's, does anybody, uh, wanna approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, um, I agree also, so the ayes have it. Uh, do we have a motion for items on the consent agenda? I don't know what that is, to be honest, Travis, I'm, it's on the, it's on my steel here, but.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's listed as action items here.
Can I give you a copy of the agenda? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's just, it's listed.
This is the consent, okay. So, well, actually, so there is no consent agenda tonight, it's just for action items. All right.
So, minutes first.
Okay, did anyone look at the minutes from last time?
Oh, yeah, I did.
I did. Does anybody have any comments, do you wanna?
Nope.
Do you wanna approve them then, or?
Uh, I move that we approve the minutes from the October meeting.
Second.
I agree, there was one small, uh, inconsistency on it, but it, I don't think it's relevant and worth correcting.
Okay.
It mentions me that, uh, it mentions me responding to, to Holland, saying that, uh, that the marijuana shop owner was not, could not, it said, it implied that I had direct knowledge of whatever agreement that she was talking about, saying that he couldn't apply later.
Oh.
And I believe that I said that, hey, I don't believe that we can do that.
Okay.
Rather than I, but I don't think it matters really, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out. Okay. Well, let's move on to the action items then, um. Uh, let's start with, uh, ordinance number fifteen eighty.
I'm sorry, did you make a, uh, who made the motion to approve the minutes?
I did.
And since there are three of you, technically, you do not need a, um, a second, because you're a small, considered a small board, but.
No, did not know that. Okay.
But, but for, for the sake of practice.
That'll happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so you wanna open that by reading that into the record?
Sure, ordinance number fifteen eighty, an ordinance providing for the collection of fire impact fees is authorized by chapter eighty-two dot O two, R C W, amending ordinance number ten fifty-nine. Um, do I read the summary statement then, Travis, is that what you're asking for?
Uh.
Or is that you?
And actually, I think the first one is fifteen eighty.
That's what I read.
Okay, fifteen eighty, okay, great, thank you.
Would you like me to add the summary statement as well? Okay, thank you, you might have to prod me along, Travis, I don't do this every day, so. Staff is requesting review of a, of a recommendation for, on ordinance number fifteen eighty for updating fire impact collection rates. Fire impact fees are collected under the authority of, uh, Wat- Washington Municipal Code, or Woodland Municipal Code, three point four one, per W M C, three point four one, point one one zero, review and revision. Impact fee shall be reviewed by the city council as it may deem necessary and appropriate, or in conjunction with the annual update of the capital facilities plan element of the city's comprehensive plan. Impact fee rates shall be adjusted periodically to reflect changes in costs of land acquisition and construction, facility plan projects, and anticipated growth. Such adjustments shall only become effective upon adoption by the city council of a modification to the capital facilities plan, provided, however, that the capital facilities plan may contain a provision for automatic revision of an impact fee rate no more often than annually to reflect the change in a generally recognized and applicable inflation slash deflation index. Clark County Fire Rescue adopted a revised capital facility plan for twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-five and July of twenty twenty-four, and is asking the city of Woodland to amend its fire impact fee rates that it collects on the district beha- on the district's behalf. That last statement's just probably for us.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, for the record, my name is Travis Goddard, Community Development Director for the City of Woodland, and, um, as you noticed, or, I'm sorry, as you read, as you mentioned, the authority for this is under Woodland Municipal Code three point four one, and the fire impact fees that have been proposed are based upon Clark County Fire Rescue, um, ordinance, or, I'm sorry, resolution, and the capital facilities plans that were adopted, and we are simply charging the fee that has been set based upon their calculation. So, um, you mentioned that, so just for the record, the existing impact fees that are charged for the fire district are, uh, shown in the, um, ordinance, and, um, as attachment B, the existing rates are fifteen thirty for single-family residential, fourteen twenty-six for multifamily, and commercial and industrial development pays at a rate per square foot, so if it's a thousand square foot, they'd pay a thousand times fifty-one cents per square foot. The proposed rate, so single-family is actually going down to six fifty-four, multifamily is going down to three oh eight, and industrial and commercial users are actually going up, and, um, the recommendation by staff is, um, actually has one additional recommendation, and that is there's an R C W for accessory dwelling units, and it limits accessory dwelling units, whether it's a mother-in-law apartment above a garage, or a tiny home in the backyard, that, um, they are limited by state law to fifty percent of the rate of the primary structure. So in this case, um, the accessory dwelling unit would be three hundred and twenty-seven, so that's not actually in the Clark Cowlett's Fire Rescue uh, request, but because we are obligated to comply with state law, that we are adding that in there, they are aware of that, and they understand that, and, um, support that. Other jurisdictions are doing that as well.
Are they gonna pay fifty percent of that three twenty-seven, or is the three twenty-seven fifty percent?
So the three twenty-seven is fifty percent of the single-family rate.
Okay.
So that's where I got that number from. Okay, so any questions?
I do not, I don't have any questions. Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Uh, public?
Oh, sorry. Would, would anybody in the public care to, uh, ask any questions or make any comments in opposition or in support of a recommendation?
So Donna, for those at home who can't, who didn't hear, um, Donna asked, verify that this is a one-time fee, that is correct, I'm sorry, I should've added that, especially Cliff, because you may not have, have dealt with this one before. Impact fees are under the Growth Management Act, and they are specifically fees for additional capacity needs that are needed, um, in this case, by the fire district, so bigger fire hall, new fire equipment, or an additional fire engine, or a ladder, truck. Um, those are capital costs that existing taxpayers should not have to pay more than their fair burden of that. So, under the Growth Management Act, that additional capacity is paid for by fees from new development. So theoretically, uh, it can be used to pay off new fire stations, new fire equipment, and that kind of capital investment. It is not used for maintenance and operations, so we're not firing, uh, not paying firefighters out of that, we're not buying, um, you know, refills or new fire hoses for that, so. Yes, this is a one-time fee paid with every building permit that gets issued.
Not seeing any, any hands up, or without any comments. Prelimarily, I, I move that we, we recommend approval for, for this to the city council. Anybody wanna second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Oh, we don't have to have a second, can I?
Oh, we do.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's better policy, don't we?
Right, right, right. Okay, did you wanna vote on these?
Yeah, roll, you want me to, I'll do roll.
Yeah.
Uh, so Brian Mattson.
Aye.
Cliff Georgoff. Sharon Watt.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, now we're cooking with gas, we're moving along. Okay.
So you can just read the agenda, the full agenda item.
You don't have to read all that summary thing.
Oh, okay, just the subject.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need to do the full summary.
All right, uh, the next one is the ordinance number fifteen seventy-nine, it's an ordinance providing for the collection of school impact fees, is authorized by chapter eighty-two dot O two, amending ordinance number fourteen thirty-one.
Thank you for the record again, my name is Travis Goddard, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Woodland. The proposed ordinance that's before you is based upon the, um, Woodland School District number four oh four, uh, Capital Facilities Plan, and that was adopted under resolution twenty-five zero six, it is attached to the staff report, and it's based upon the Capital Facilities Plan that they recently adopted in August twenty twenty-five. And the reason why the Clark Cowlett's Fire Rescue was twenty twenty-four is we did not have a conversation with them, even though they had a new capital facilities plan, we didn't talk about updating their capital, or their impact fees, until the school district brought this up and made the request, and I thought I'd do them both at the same time, so. That's why one is a year older, but they hadn't made any capital investments, so, um, we are behind the ball on the fire, but on the school district. We had a discussion, so we know it went in, in August, and they made the request in September. After discussion with the school district, because we have a lot of residential development that is in review, we felt it was fair that the developers be given a lead time because of the changes that were proposed, and so I will go over those, but, um, we have requested the council put it into effect January first, that gives the developers who are in the building permit process the opportunity, um, to get to pay the impact fees that were in effect when they submitted, um, even though they're paid when they're issued. So, um, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because, as you see on this slide, the change in the school impact fees is significant. So it's going from fifty-nine hundred dollars flat rate for single and multifamily units. Um, accessory dwelling units and small bedroom and studio apartments were charged two thousand. The, the school district calculations based upon the new capital facilities plan is going to ten thousand five hundred and forty-five and ninety-three cents for single family, and multifamily is going to thirteen, six hundred and sixty-four and fifty-seven cents. And, um, they've also recognized that the A D U impact fees are at, set at fifty percent, so it's clarified that that is what they've requested. And so staff is recommending that you, um, recommend approval to the council for the requested amounts as shown in the attached ordinance.
So, I, I, I understand that, I mean, I can see that it's a significance jump, ten thousand is in line with battleground schools, I mean, so it's not, you know, it's not dramatically higher than anywhere else, but, wha- I'm curious, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for the schools, because it's here, but are they okay with being able to vest the building permit fee at, at submission instead of issuance, because I, I don't know how the code reads for that.
Yes, so, um, actually, it was interesting because.
Fairness standpoint, I get it, but I'm just wondering if their school would push back on that.
And what had actually happened is the council initially adopted a capital facilities plan, and they had used some housing numbers which were incorrect, and they had expected the fees to go to fifty-nine hundred to thirteen hundred, and when they submitted that to me, kind of doing my due diligence to present that to the council, I was looking through their numbers, and I thought, it's awfully weird that that number is going down. And I discovered that they were not using the accurate housing numbers that we had done for the comprehensive plan. And so when they recalculated it based upon numbers that we were using for our new comprehensive plan, plus the exit twenty-one study, we had done, we had done some estimates for housing capacity upriver and in the bottoms. When they recalculated their numbers, they figured out, yes, this was a catastrophic oversight, and instead of being a fifth or a fourth of what they expected, it's actually three times more than they were currently collecting. So given that they expected a lot less, and the sticker shock for them was overwhelming as well, so they felt it was fair for the people who were in the process, and were told a certain number for the last two years, that they'd be able to, given time, and I think we gave them in the end ninety days, and several of them are hustling to get in, um, but.
You know, you know, I mean, it's easy to cons- I'm just, I'm just talking, but it's easy to consider these fees, if they're paid by the developer, when they get their building removed, they're always passed on to whoever buys the house, I mean, it's not truly just, but, but these fees do do help mitigate, uh, you know, the increase in taxes that, that they're, that they ask for every couple of years, so. I think, you know, it's important to, to, you know, to realize it is a one-time fee, and that fee will, uh, go towards funding all other families that will ever live in that house. Right, for, for their school-aged children, so, it's a lot of money, but, but I understand.
And in the packet, it actually includes the calculations for how they figured out how many students will be brought into, um, the school district ba- based upon each unit, and they use an accepted rate that is set by the state for, or, by a calculation that is set by the state, and then they figure out, okay, typical for Woodland, if each single-family home will have you know, one high school student for every three houses, they assign that as point three three per house, and then if there's one middle school student for each five houses, that rate will be point one, point two per house. And so they can figure out, okay, on average, a house is gonna provide a third of a high school student, a fifth of a middle school student, and maybe a, a third of an elementary school student, and then they figure out how much they're gonna have to invest in investments for middle schools, elementary schools, and high school. In this case, because we built a high school recently, it's that student share of the debt for constructing the high school. So, for example, we might collect of that ten thousand dollars, three thousand dollars of that might be for the high school, and the school district will turn around and pay off high school debt for that student that is gonna come out of the average house. So they can allot that money in certain ways based upon the state, but, um, the actual numbers, if you wanna dive into it, are actually attached to the agenda, and we can go through that, but it's simple calculations based upon how many houses they have in the district, and how many students they currently serve.
This is, this might be a dumb question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, this is only for new homes in the Woodland, City of Woodland, so Cowlett's County may have a different impact fee for the Woodland schools. Because Woodland schools pulls from outside the city limits too, right?
Yes, and technically, it pulls, um, impact fees from Clark County as well.
Right, right.
Because the school district and the district.
Because they're considerably lower in the Clark County impact fees.
Although eventually, the school district will be asking Clark County to also amend their fees, and so that will become. And so that will be coming as well, so, um, it is a problem that the district has Clark, or sorry, Cowlets County students and development that does not pay impact fees, um, and they are-
They don't pay any impact fees.
Doesn't pay any impact fees, so transportation, park, schools, yeah, so, um, but they are aware of that and we write every time I see a development application in the county that generates, um, residential development. I send a letter on behalf of the city, we call it our poke the bear letter, because we're constantly saying that traffic affects us. Those students affect us.
Well, and it's not fair for the rest of the ratepayers to be taking up the slack for the people that don't.
Yes, but, but, um, the calculations do account for the fact that we are not paying for those students. That is paid across the entire district by the taxpayers, not the developers.
Okay.
So yes, we are aware of that and that is a fair statement that not everybody is paying their fair share for development.
Does anybody in the audience have any strong feelings for and against Donna? Do you want to, do you, you, are you okay with getting up to the mic? Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right.
Yeah, so I don't like seeing fees increase. Oh, Donna Butler, and I attend school board meetings regularly, so I see what's going on. They are so happy with the large levy, they got, I believe the percentage of this last levy was topped out at what they're allowed to ask the pa- taxpayers for. And they're so happy and they are blowing through that money. And there's, I mean, the most recent water bill was thirty-six thousand dollars in one month for our school because they're now watering everything, which we're kind of coming into the rainy season, I'm not sure about that. Anyway, um, um, uh, so affordable housing is a big topic right now, we see it everywhere. National, global, local, everywhere. This doesn't help affordable housing. So if we want to say that we're committed to affordable housing, it seems like, you know, I, if you want a rate increase or it seems fair enough to do that, fine, but like to have it increase that much. Also, um, at the last school board meeting, they acknowledged that enrollment is down. People are having less children, I mean, there's more dogs in Seattle than children. I mean, that I, that's a statistic. Um, people are not having children like they used to, so enrollment is down. And people are very unhappy with the school system, what they're teaching the kids. And they're pulling their kids out of school. And there, I see it on Facebook, I personally homeschool my children, the reason was curriculum. And, um, and so I could, I could do that, but there's a lot of people that aren't happy with how the school's spending the money they do have. So I think there are a few factors like that would justify not such a large amount on the impact fees. And there, there's some other issues, but those were the ones that came to mind right off the top, so, anyway, have at it.
Thank you, Donna. Travis, you know, I know that they have a methodology for setting the amount that they're asking for. How much, I don't know, I don't know that I'm qualified to tear that apart, you know what I mean? I don't know if I, if I would be qualified to, to, to debunk their, their, uh, methodology, you know what I mean? Do, what do you think about their, their, uh, formulas as far as?
So I have gone on the record saying that I, the longer I've been doing this, I've been a planner for twenty-seven years now and the longer I've been doing it, the less happy I am with the Growth Management Act because they seem to add goals, but they never seem to add priorities or clarifications. And, um, the affordability to me is one of the most important goals and purposes of the Growth Management Act because we're supposed to be planning ahead, yet we continue to add regulations and costs and, um, whether it's protection of the environment, which is also important, but adds cost and the transportation equity that's GMA looks for. So you have transportation impact fees, you have parks and recreation, which is a goal of, um, the Growth Management Act, yet we have park impact fees that are based upon the cost of our park system. And I struggle with this as well. And you always have the option of making a recommendation that we not do that or not implement this or set lower rates. Um, and you can let the council deal with that because ultimately, I mean, that we were only a heartbread away from cutting them by a quarter, let alone timesing them by three. And this happened with the traffic impact fees three years ago as well. We went from eight thirty-eight to, and we're now in the final step and it's eighty-three hundred. So the transportation impact fees were ten Xed three years ago. And so Donna's right, the Growth Management Act does not do a good job addressing affordable housing.
I don't, I'd, to, to lower it to a number, I'd be picking an arbitrary number with no basis whatsoever.
Uh, so Donna says that, uh, that enrollment is declining, but I see in here that they're talking about building another, um, elementary, they, they, they're projecting a need for another elementary.
And part of that is because I believe they are looking at adding the twelfth portable at the middle school. And so at some point, they're recognizing that the maintenance responsibilities for the, all of those portables is going to roll over into a new elementary school. And so at some point, yeah, that is a question that they're gonna have to address. And also, the unfortunate reality is, is when they set the impact fees previously, the construction costs and the cost of property, I believe it ended up being five X just for the property and the construction. So, um, it's, the reality is, is it's construction inflation, it is not enrollment-driven.
Travis, where, where did the, how long did they have that fifty-nine hundred number? How long, how, how many years did that, was that in effect?
Uh, I can answer that by looking at the city code. Twenty sixteen, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's, even that's not right. Um, so their last capital facility plan was done six years ago, so that would have been twenty nineteen.
Okay, so six years.
So it has been six years.
And, and this, uh, ten thousand five hundred dollar, uh, fee is, or, well, whatever the new fees are, that's a proposal by the school district? That's their number?
Yes, so they adopted their capital facilities pan, plan and their, their calculation is this is what they should be asking for.
Right, right. I understand. So we need to decide what we're gonna do on this particular thing?
What our recommendation to the city council?
I know what mine is.
Well, start us off.
Um, I've got, I, I, I had a lot of experience with school districts, a cou- a couple of different school districts. And they always ask for the moon, always. And because they think they deserve it and I, and in some ways, teachers, the way I treated some of the teachers, they deserve it. But, um, uh, but almost doubling the impact fees, that, I don't, I'm not gonna buy that. I'm not gonna buy that at all. They need to get more realistic. Um, what I see them do is they'll come back and say, well, if we don't get what we want, we're gonna cut the football team. Good. Uh, or the track team or the cheerleaders and it's-
Actually, they don't cut those, they cut things like music or art.
That too?
Well, not that too, I mean, you, you can't, you can't touch football and sports.
Well, but they, they argue that they're going to. So, um, I'm not in favor of it.
Well, so what, you, you send it back to the school district to recalculate, I mean, we have no ideas about numbers.
Right, I mean, our, I think that our role, and Travis can correct me, is just to make a recommendation to city council and they're gonna decide whether they're gonna accept these numbers or not, right? So we're not on the hook for establishing a more, more reasonable rate at least.
So we recommend not to accept or to accept?
Well, it's up to you to decide.
Well, we're gonna vote on it.
We're gonna vote on, yeah.
Right, the, I, as a, I want, I agree with what you said, that, that, you know, most all governmental budgeting is they ask for as much as they can and if they get it, then they spend it all, otherwise they won't get it again next time.
Exactly.
Right, and this is kind of the way that, that system is flawed a little bit. But I think that if you, if you don't pay the tra- the school impact fees to build more schools, they're gonna pa- they're gonna ask for another levy, right? And, and at least the impact fees for the schools is being targeted by a new home, a one-time fee for a new home.
Sure.
And not a continuing tax on, on my place every, you know, every year, but, you know, the, the judge want to balance that with, with, you know, are the rates high yet? I agree, they're high. I just want to balance the nature of the impact fee is only applicable to the, to the people that are building and moving into the-
Moving in or buying the-
Buying the new homes, buying the new homes. I mean, because the developer passes that on to them, I mean.
Sure.
Right, and it, and it makes it less affordable, I get it. Um, you know, you would hope that folding that into your mortgage might make it a little more passable than, than, than every taxpayer coming up with that every, you know, well, I guess that's folded into your mortgage too. I believe in school impact fees, um, but I do, I do acknowledge that they're high and they, they're almost doubling, which is a significant increase. Well, if either of you feel strongly about, um, recommending approval or not recommending approval, you can make a motion. And then we'll vote on it.
I would move that we not recommend this proposal.
Okay.
So does Brian, uh, vote or not on this? I mean, I, the chair doesn't, he only votes if it's a tie?
So that has, that's Dave's opinion, Tell's opinion was Tell would vote, but he would always give his opinion last because he didn't want to influence the discussion, but he was always a voting member, um, and so that-
I don't mind voting, I, I don't, no, I, I think that, you know, I think we owe everybody a vote, right? I don't want to stay out of stuff.
And for clarification, I would like to point out that if the council, um, adopts or adopts the ordinance, the fees would change. If they choose not to adopt the fees, they would remain at the fifty-nine hundred and two thousand. So it's not like this is a, um, zero or recommend approval of what they've requested.
Or they could come back with another number.
They could come back with another number.
Can we, if you're conflicted a little bit, Sharon, we can soften or modify the motion to, um,
You, we can table it, we can just table it.
I, I, I really don't like table.
Well, that's the same thing as if we-
Be able to calm out a little bit, but, but, no, I get, I get it, um-
Then that lets the council decide it, which is what it sounds like Travis is saying.
Well, they're, they're gonna decide whichever way.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm just-
We're, we're only recommendations, they're gonna decide.
Right, exactly, they can do whatever they want. I, you know, if, if we, if we were to move to, uh, recommend conditional approval upon the demonstration of an appropriate fee here, so you know what I mean? You've not, not come talking around it a little bit, but-
All we can do is, is vote this up again, that's all we can do.
I like the simplicity of it.
Okay, but you need a second, and if I don't second it?
Then it dies.
Yeah. Well.
The motion dies.
Motion dies.
Yep. So then we just need another motion.
Motion to-
You could also make a motion to continue it to the next planning commission meeting and have the counts, have the school district come do a presentation.
And there'll be two, two more people here to theoretically, yeah.
I thought tabling was basically locking it in a closet.
No. No, that's a, that's in the feds, that's Mike Johnson's deal.
Yeah, let's, let's move it to next month.
With a full planning commission.
Yeah, let's just table it, don't-
So you want to make a motion to continue?
Okay, I, I move that we can, uh, we continue this, um, ordinance until next month.
Can I second that, Sharon?
So Brian, can you clarify the date and time specific and location for the record?
I don't know what the third Thursday of the month is next month.
So that will be-
You're gonna have to help me with that.
So that will be December eighteenth, seven o'clock right here.
Okay, um, planning commission has moved and seconded to continue this agenda item on December eighteenth at seven P M. Did I get it all in there?
Okay.
Okay. Did we need a vote?
Do we have a second on that?
Yes, yes.
Clifford's second.
Cliff's seconded it.
Yeah, aye. Are we voting, I'm sorry?
Okay, you'll, I'll do roll call.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Cliff Georgoff?
Aye.
Sharon Watt?
Aye.
Brian Mattson?
Aye.
Did it, are you sure?
I'm sure.
If you have to be somewhere, we can, we can get you out of here, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Onto the next one. Okay.
Workshops.
Travis, uh, okay, so House Bill thirteen thirty, I'm thirty-seven, requires cities to allow for accessory dwelling unit codes to be amended to streamline processes, limit costs and allow multiple ADUs on lots. Do you have a presentation for us, Travis, or, or an overview?
Yeah, sorry, for some reason it seems to have closed, let me find it. So for these, um, because this is a workshop and it's just a general discussion, I wanted to have a quick presentation on each of the, each of the items that were on the list that we had talked about previously. So that you could have this data and take, or have this and take a look at it. And what I was hoping for is you would give me direction today as or whether or not you would like me to prepare some language uh, and bring it back to you, or whether you wanted to at the next meeting have a full presentation and discussion and direct me specifically what you would like me to address, um, on each one of these. So this can take five minutes or, um, you can tell me, okay, I, we want to handle these ones in Janu- in December and then let's just focus on this is the most important one, so that's the kind of- and then let's just focus on this is the most important one. So that's the kind of feedback I'm looking for for tonight.
So do we have other things on the December agenda?
Uh, we do not, not at this point. There aren't, there's nothing else other than what you want me to.
I think we need to talk about the, uh, what the, the rules.
Rules, yes.
Other than that.
The rules, and technically David talked about having the rules back in January so that you could read them, agree to them, and sign them while you're here in January.
Oh, okay.
Cause by the rules, they should be signed every January.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so what I did in the case of this summary is I just put a quick short note of what the existing code says. And the existing code, which is seventeen sixteen one hundred, it has nine criteria for accessory dwelling units. And what it says is you can have one ADU per lot, per the House bill that we're discussing. That is actually, uh, two. You can put two accessory dwelling units, uh, up, or I should say up to two. Doesn't have to be two. Um, so you can do one or two on a lot. And, uh, the second criteria is either an ADU or the primary residence must be occupied by the owner. This is no longer legal, this is an old code, and the city of Woodland, uh, or all government jurisdictions after the Supreme Court, has said we cannot determine what a, what constitutes a family and who can live in a residence. So, um, that was decided by the Supreme, Supreme Court, so this needs to be removed. The third criteria is total occupancy load limit. Again, this is another from that same Supreme Court. We cannot dictate how many people can live in a home, and so this needs to be removed as well. Um, the fourth criteria is ADU size limitations, um, and the fifth criteria is also size limitations. And what the code basically says is if it's a small lot, you, you're limited in size. If it is a larger lot, so say you have half an acre, you can put in a bigger ADU that might be the same size as the house. Um, but this is actually changed by thirteen thirty-three, and it has specific limitations. We can no longer dictate that they can be a maximum of eight hundred square feet. Actually, they can be a minimum of a thousand square feet or larger based upon, um, the new law. So it is dictated in the code, and I can bring that to you for you to debate whether you wanna make it larger. Um, but the language is specific in the new thirteen thirty-seven House bill. Um, number six also requires that, uh, the criteria says at least one additional off-street parking space is required. Uh, lot seven, or number seven says lot size limitations to require attached or detached accessory dwelling units. This has changed under thirteen thirty-seven, so I don't believe we can dictate whether or not they're attached or detached. So examples are, um, if you build an addition to the house versus a separate structure. And, um, number eight says ADU designs must be consistent with the primary residence. And it also talks about, um, that the secondary doorway needs to be towards the side or the rear yard. And so the idea with the original code was you want it to look like a house or a house and its shop or garage. So they looked the same as opposed to having, you know, a modern new house with an old-looking ADU or vice versa. Um, so to be in character with the neighborhood was the idea here, and this actually has changed. And, um, for example, we can no longer require the doors to be accessed to the side or the rear yard. They can now, under the state law, um, so you can see multiple doors from the street. So this also will need to change. And then the last one is that the technical codes like fire code, building code, plumbing code, electrical code need to be met. That is still consistent, um, so that will not change. And, um, that's essentially the criti- the discussion of thirteen thirty-seven focuses on how Woodland wants to do its accessory dwelling units.
So I, and I, and I wanna go, I'm not interested in going down the rabbit hole. I mean, this is something the state has passed, so we're bound by it, right? So, and I'm fine with you coming up with some language.
It seems, yeah, just do what we need to do and.
One, one thing that I, that I thought of, cause I deal with this in Clark County also, is the way that that bill is written, it says that you have to allow up to two ADUs in any zone that allows a single-family residence, right? And so recently I came across somebody in a, in a BP business park zone that had an old, older home, but existing residences are allowed in the business park zone. So we, we advise them that they could do two ADUs. If you have a house at two ADUs, you're, if you add more ADUs to it, it's less likely to convert to business park zone later. You know, I don't know if that's an issue for here. I don't know how many existing homes we have in commercial areas. But, you know, you ideally want commercial stuff in commercial zones and not have pockets of house and little apartments. I don't know if that's an issue here. I don't know if we have that many instances, but it's just something I ran across.
That's an interesting question. I would need, I can take a look at our code, um, because our code does say existing non-conforming houses can continue. Um, but I wonder whether our language or whether the law covers.
It just says allows.
Whether that would, would that be allowed or permitted? Because I think our code specifically does not allow new, single-family residential.
Right, it doesn't usually, it doesn't allow increases in density.
Yes.
But ADUs, at least in Clark County's perspective.
So that's an interesting question. I can explore that and bring that back to you.
Okay. Well, I move that you come up with some language for that.
And actually, we have some ADU language in the middle, missing, or the housing action plan language that we came up before. So we might have something that doesn't need a lot of modification. So I'll get to that presentation later. Okay. Any other questions about this one? You want me to bring this back in December? This is probably one of those housing-specific priorities that.
If you think you have the time to do it.
Yep. Okay, and unfortunately, it looks like these were put on the agenda without any particular order. Um, so item E on the workshop is, uh, state bill, or, or sorry, Senate Bill fifty-four twelve, and it deals with categorical exemptions for infill projects. So this is a very narrow bill that would affect Woodlands, um, chapter fifteen oh four, which is our CIPA, uh, State Environmental Policy Act. And, um, the categorical exemptions, which we have in our code, are on the, um, uh, agenda report and the summary before you. And the city of Woodland, um, has an exemption level for four residential development, or four residential units. So five or more would require a CIPA checklist. And then, uh, agricultural structures, more than ten thousand square feet, that wouldn't change. Office, school, commercial, that would not change. For parking lots, up to twenty spaces, um, that could potentially change, um, for infill projects, but it's unlikely that we, we will have infill projects that are that big, cause that would be ten residential units or more, and we don't have an infill code that would allow that. So that's not gonna fig- uh, figure into the discussion as well. And then, um, our code specifically says that we can establish new exempt levels under the existing, uh, State Environmental Policy Act. And specifically, we can increase those numbers. So the biggest one is the single-family residential. We could go from four up to thirty units if we choose. Um, but, uh, we could also go to twenty, up to twenty units without requiring a CIPA checklist. So, um, these are options, and I will take a look at the language, um, what is required and whether it's required. But the idea behind this bill is we are trying to remove costs and hurdles and, and process to the development process. But, um, we are not obligated to do these.
So just my thought in general about CIPA. CIPA was, began what, nineteen seventy-one?
Yep.
Right? And so we didn't have a lot of critical areas, you know, other codes that, like we do now. And so CIPA was meant to protect all those areas back then. And so I find, at least in my experience, I find that the only time I ever get any value out of the CIPA process is if we're doing something that involves like dust or some sort of commercial use that has really heavy impacts to people, like noise or dust. These things are all common stuff that I don't understand why we would wanna do this. But things that five houses, I mean, no, we don't need an environmental impact statement for five houses.
Yeah.
Kind of where I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of raising those exempt levels for, for stuff like this. And this is very specific, the stuff it's listing to. Do you do the C, do you, in Woodland, do you do the CIPA review before the rest of the review, or is it done concurrently?
It's done concurrently.
Okay, so it won't make differences in timelines for you, but.
We use the op- yep. We use the optional process, which means that we make a CIPA determination as part of the notice.
Right.
So neighbors and agencies know that we are making an environmental determination when we review the project.
Right, so that won't, it won't significantly affect timelines by raising these exemptions. It'll just be another fifteen hundred dollars that they don't have to come up with.
That, that's correct.
Whatever.
It reduces bureaucracy and paperwork.
Right. And you're just gonna come up with some language on that one too?
Yeah.
This one's an easy one, I think. I don't think it's divisive at all. Let's go to the next one, Travis.
So action item F is in regards to, uh, Senate Bill fifty-eight eighteen, and it's regarding housing construction. And it also makes amendments to the State Environmental Policy Act and GMA by making changes to the appeal process. This is another one, um, that is a relatively quick fix, and we do not deal with a lot of appeals around here. And this, in my opinion, was kind of intended to prevent a lot of NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard lawsuits and appeals that were meant to delay development projects. So, um, this is one that will have very little impact on the city of Woodland, but it does have a couple standards that we would need to implement. But because there's very little applicability, it may be one of those low priority things that
From.
Might be a distraction.
From what I've noticed, when, when jurisdictions want to limit appeals, they just raise the cost of them. Right, cause nobody, nobody wants to put down a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars, cause they don't like something. But if it's a hundred dollars, maybe, you know.
Yeah, there, there's nothing we can do here. It says we must do this.
Uh, I believe we are required to do this, but the danger of us not doing it is, um, the state law becomes applicable six months after our comprehensive plan is done. I think we'll get it done before then. This is something we can do, but it's low priority and low impact.
I don't, I don't want it to make, I don't wanna make it impossible to appeal something, right? Cause appeals have their place.
Yeah.
People should be able to appeal stuff, but, but I don't know what they're asking to do either, right?
But eventually, we're gonna have to get into this and come up with some language. It's just pretty low impact at this point, in my opinion.
There might be some language out there we can just copy from another jurisdiction.
Which we will. Yes, yeah. We won't have to reinvent the wheel on this.
Sure, okay. All right, is that the end of our agenda?
Nope, not qu- not quite.
Oh, no, we got a couple more, okay.
Yep.
I don't have any more papers.
Next.
So. The next one on the agenda is, so, um.
Housing construction.
State Bill four, I'm sorry, it's ordinance fourteen eighty that was brought up in, in twenty twenty, but was, it went through a first reading but was not passed for second reading by the council. And it had to do with our missing middle housing code and meeting, um, our housing action plan. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to switch to PowerPoint and give you those presentations so that you would understand what was being considered at that time. If you don't mind. So, yes, I think this is the one. Yes. Okay, so, um, this is. I'll try and rush through this so we can get you out of here, Cliff.
That's, I'm okay now.
Oh, okay. Housing Action Plan, um, under Zoning Text Amendment twenty twenty number four, and this is from March of twenty twenty. The purpose of the bill that, that we were talking about at that time is nineteen twenty-three, and to increase residential building capacity in the urban areas of the state. And the idea was to pursue residential building capacity in housing affordability projects through code changes, uh, that encourage housing projects. So we did a housing action plan at that time, and sorry, that's. I might have opened the wrong one. Yes, I did. So. Let me switch here. Close that one. Okay, there we go. Um, so the House bill essentially had nine items that were applicable to the city of Woodland that we discussed. The ones on the right-hand column are ones that wouldn't necessarily apply to Woodland, because we don't have light rail, transit corridors, sub-area planning, uh, planned action provisions, or form-based codes. But the one on the left-hand columns are ones that we had talked about that could be adopted in our code. So we allow for single-family residential duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, but they have, um, um, some hurdles in the code that require some additional permits and reviews. We also have cluster developments, accessory dwelling units, like we talked about before. Um, there are some time savings in the CIPA exemption, so you can see a lot of these keep coming back to those environmental regulations that add time and expense, but don't necessarily add a lot of value. So the number of lots was being raised even in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, infill provisions, which we've talked about, uh, in, or which we will talk about in other regulations. Short plats, um, we can do up to nine lots with an administrative approval. Our code currently only has four units, um, through an administrative process, and then it needs to go through a hearings examiner for five or more. The state law allows us to change that to nine, so it's. The state law allows us to change that to nine, so it's more, but it's not a significant amount of. Um cost savings or time savings. And duplexes on corner lots was also a code section that we had discussed. And also the the house bill requires a net density of six units per acre. So the ones that we had looked at back in twenty twenty in the house or the ordinance that was passed was here. So let me dive into those real quick to talk about it. So currently, short subdivisions can be done with up to four lots. And the state rules allow nine lots. To change our code to accommodate this, we would only have to change five words in our code. It's actually a very simple change. It has a huge reduction in bureaucracy because we are seeing a lot of projects that are in the five, six, seven units. And they have to go through a public hearing and it almost doubles the cost of the permits alone. Um and so this would save applicants time and money, um but it doesn't increase the density. Um but it encourages small scale development projects, so those code changes were ready to view at the time. And the planning commission had recommended approval of them. Now, the six units per acre, the reason why that's important is you see on the left hand column, those are the types of zoning we have. Low density residential six, which is a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. And that works out to seven point three units per acre. But the net density that is allowed by that zoning is only five point eight units per lot. So when you separate out. Normal road construction and road dedication, you really only end up with eighty percent of the lot. That's usable for housing. And so even in our highest density, low density, the single family homes. We don't get anywhere near the minimum of five, of six units per acre. The math just doesn't work with our existing code. And you see as you get into these larger lot developments, seventy two hundred, eighty five hundred and ten thousand square feet. We don't get anywhere near the state um required density of six units per acre. Now, I also need to point out that we have low density residential ten thousand square foot zoning. But we don't actually have any of it on the map, so ignore that one because we don't have any in the zoning. But the idea behind this part of the code was we want to require. New developers to have creative solutions like maybe duplexes. And single family homes on large lots and townhomes on small lots. So that it would require them to be more creative than the cooker, cookie cutter same size. Eight thousand, ten thousand square foot lots without meeting density. So eventually, the city is gonna have to expand our urban growth boundary if we wanna accommodate development. Because our code either is cookie cutter, single family homes, or high density residential. Our code doesn't require developers do anything creative or. You know, respond to market, it just encourages maximum profit by looking at maximum lot size. With no variety whatsoever, so.
If you want more density, you just, why wouldn't you just do a maximum lot size?
And Dave Simpson brought this up when we were talking about the comprehensive plan. He would like to see developers do more planned unit residential development, which requires. A big house and a small house and a duplex and a big house and a small house and a big house and a small house. That variety is kind of what you get in the old neighborhoods. Because that's the way development used to occur, but our code doesn't. Really force developers to be creative and that's one of Dave's pet peeves, so. Since he's not here, I will speak up for him because that is one of his issues, so. Um a six unit per acre minimum and it may not be in all of the zones, it may just be in the six and the seven point two. You can take a look at the map and decide whether or not you think, you know, maybe those two zones is where it belongs. Because the five point eight and the four point eight aren't that far. And especially when we talk about the idea that accessory dwelling units are, will be allowed. Two of those on a lot, so what you might get is a twelve acre or a twelve thousand square foot lot with a home. And two ADUs and then you get two or three single family homes. So only one of those lots has a creative solution as opposed to trying to force them all to do duplexes. Or higher density, so.
You, you consider ADUs an increase in density?
Sorry?
You consider ADUs an increase in density?
Yes, yep, so, and I think that's one of the discussions we can have. Because the code that existed in twenty nineteen that we discussed didn't. But now I think the state law does, we should be talking density with ADUs. Cause we can um, one of the things we will get to is how the house sizes have exploded. And that has means you have giant houses on postage stamp lots. They don't have a lot of character, there's not a lot of elbow room for kids. Um this density would be way for us to try and create those. Get back to the older ways of smaller houses or a house, big house with two small units. And mother in law apartments or rentals or, you know, your teenager gets his own space. This is how we might get there. Um and so, sorry, I covered all of this when we were talking. Okay, so again, the CIPA exemption for infill projects. We don't really have a definition for infill, um but we have language prepared. And there's now an additional law that we talked about previously for the CIPA exemptions. That is already in effect that um we don't necessarily need to do it under this one, but it is applicable. So the other thing, um and this is probably the one where we spent the most time in creative discussion is duplexes on corner lots. And the idea is, is that when you have a corner lot, you can have one driveway off of each street. So it actually looks like there's one driveway and a single family home. You go around the corner. You don't really realize that that driveway is the same lot. But it looks like a single family home, so it looks like the rest of the neighborhood. Cause in this case, each one of these corner units has a duplex, but it really looks just like the house next door. So you'll see that um each of those arrows is pointing to a duplex driveway that's on a different corner. So it preserves the character of the neighborhood while it allows you to increase density without getting, you know, instead of the. The old style used to be two driveways and doors, garage doors right next to each other. That's not necessarily the most attractive, so we can encourage this by allowing it in creative solutions. And so, sorry, so this is the aerial photo and I wanted you to see what they look like on the street. So in this case, the red truck is one unit. And then you can see the houses on the driveway over there to the right, that's the other unit. But from the street, they really kinda look like just single family homes. So these are examples of how it looks like a home from the street. And that kinda gets to that character preservation issues. So um that was included in there. Now, the other ones that we had talked about, the duplex, triplex, quadplex, that these two tools need to be added to. Um either a single family or a multi family zone. So our zone really kind of encouraged people to do single family homes or apartments. And there are a few triplexes and fourplexes around town that kind of a big lot, but it's not really. Big enough for subdivision, it makes it uncomfortable. Whereas this design would allow us to do different types of courtyard apartments or um. Stacked flats or townhomes, so you look at River Rock, the birdhouses that you see from Lewis River Road. Um we can add language or we propose language that would make that a little more attractive to developers. And um this was a matrix of our existing code and it showed that. Like our c- code does not currently even include language for triplexes and fourplexes. And multi family is not allowed in the low density zone. Um and duplexes, there is a conditional use permit, which is an expensive, time consuming hurdle. To, to allow duplexes, whereas the idea of those single family home character, we should encourage those. By removing that process and that expense. So this is our existing matrix and and you can take a look at that. The P is a permitted use, the A is an administrative um u- process. And a conditional use permit through the hearings examiner means it a full on public process. Just to get a second unit on the lot, that's kind of a big hurdle, but um. If you have any questions about this, we can discuss this at the next meeting, but this is our existing code. And um the code that we looked at addresses some of this. Uh and then we talked about the accessory dwelling unit, so I won't go over that again. But basically, that was the presentation that we had talked about um back at the time. For the code, so let me, I think I have one more quick discussion about housing. Affordability. And I'm hoping this is it. Okay, yes. So what really was driving that discussion at the time is Woodland's lack of affordability. And what exactly were we trying to get at with this action plan? And um, let's see, okay, so what is affordable? Affordable is considered thirty percent of the household income is being spent on housing. That means both your rent or mortgage and your utilities. So um that affordability is really quite shocking when we start looking through the numbers.
I don't have affordable housing.
Yeah. Really, it doesn't exist in this community, that's what the reality is. Um and really, there's two figures that we look at and affordable to who? If you're a renter, it's different than if you're an owner, because owners tend to stay in units longer. And if you bought your house ten years ago, it's a lot more affordable than it, than for a renter who comes into town. So really, when we look at median income for renters, we estimate sixty percent of the community. Median income are the people who rent, so you tend to be less affluent if you're a renter. And if you're a homeowner, you tend to be more affluent and that really means eighty percent of the median income. Now, the median income, reaching back to high school, um mathematics. A median means it's right in the middle, so the middle income for the city is. The median number, that means half of the people make more, half of the people make less. It is the true middle, like the median of a road, it's in the middle of the road as opposed to a medium or average. That might be, if you have a couple millionaires, your av- your average income is different from the median. So we're talking about median because what's affordable for sixty percent of that half? Who make less than the median income. And for Woodland, and bear in mind that these are the twenty twenty numbers, twenty nineteen calculations. The median income in Woodland was sixty two thousand four hundred and thirty. So the average renter or the median renter, half of them make thirty seven thousand four hundred and. Fifty eight dollars per household. And the median owner, their income is forty nine thousand nine hundred and forty four dollars. So that's the numbers that we were dealing with in twenty nineteen. And when you run these calculations, what's affordable? So for owners, if you're making basically fifty thousand dollars. Thirty percent of that means you should be paying no more than fifteen thousand dollars in mortgage. And utilities per year, so per rent, that means. Your rent and mortgage should be less than twelve thousand or twelve hundred and forty eight dollars per month. That's affordable, if you're paying more than that, you theoretically would not be in affordable housing. On the renter side, it's even more admissible, because when you run that math. The average renter should be paying no more than nine hundred and thirty six dollars for rent and utility. For it to be considered affordable in Woodland. So that's kind of the numbers that we look at when we talk about that. So what if you aren't median income? Well, the low income household is considered forty nine thousand nine. Um the very low household is only bringing in thirty one thousand, so thirty percent of that would be. Like six hundred dollars a month in rent and utilities. And if you're extremely low income, you're only making eighteen thousand dollars a year, nineteen thousand dollars a year total income. So Washington state is requiring us to consider how to provide. Housing in those various income bands and that's what the law requires us to look at. So this is kind of what that looks like for our community and this is twenty nineteen rent. Numbers or mortgage payment numbers. So if you're extremely low income, you would have to have a mortgage payment of three hundred and seventy five per month. Including your utilities. And for renters, it's, it's shows an even more bleak picture back then. And s- part of the question that needs to be asked and why is that housing so expensive? Or why is housing so expensive? Well, in nineteen fifty, the average house size was nine hundred eighty three square feet. And it had three point eight people in the family in that house. And so each person w- had about two hundred and ninety two square feet per person. Fast forward to twenty seventeen, um and these numbers came from the AARP. Handout for accessory dwelling units, that's where this data comes from. So the twenty seventeen average household is twenty five hundred and seventy one square feet. Yes, yep, and this is based on AARP nationwide information. And so there also the household size is getting so much smaller, two point five people per household. Which means that the average person now has a thousand square feet per person. So house sizes has exploded, families have gotten smaller and. Everything's gotten more expensive, just simply because of inflation. That's why housing is, is so expensive. And that's what we're dealing with. Now, what else makes housing so expensive? Well, Woodland's median income was forty nine thousand nine ninety four. And we're also surrounded by um communities where people commute from. So Clark County, the average median income in ninety nine was seventy nine thousand. Ridgefield, a hundred and three thousand, La Center is ninety thousand, Vancouver sixty one thousand, Calama fifty seven. Only rural Cowlets County actually had a lower median income in twenty nineteen compared to Woodland. Now, this number has significantly changed, Woodland has actually gotten significantly higher. Median income, but um still compared to our neighboring communities. We, I don't know what this number is now, because we could look at like Ridgefield, for example, and they have had significant residential growth. Um but that doesn't necessarily mean the number goes down, because they may have affluent Portlanders. Who've all moved into Ridgefield, so that number may go up. Um so just because population growth, Woodland is a good example, we've had population growth, but it doesn't mean our, our. Median income might have gone up or down just because we've grown. Um and the other thing that makes housing so expensive is. Supply and demand, I'm a big believer of sup- supply and demand, I'm a big believer of supply and demand, which is why I'm becoming less and less infatuated with the Growth Management Act. Cause the Growth Management Act has significantly changed the supply side. And for Woodland, um, in twenty sixteen, we had fifty-three new housing units, fifty-four new housing units. By twenty eighteen, we'd twenty-seven housing units. That's because the Blacktail subdivision was being built out in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Started to fill up, twenty nineteen, we essentially ran out of empty lots in Woodland. And then we only had, I think it was a total of twelve units in twenty twenty. And we had a couple of years where we were doing like ten units per year. And now, um, we've bumped up again to, I think we had fifty last year, I think we're looking at seventy-five this year. We'll have a couple more years, cause we've had the subdivisions up behind the middle school. But once those lots are developed, the two subdivisions along the Lewis River, in the next five years, we're gonna be back to five, ten, fifteen units per year. Cause we're running out of these big subdivisions to fill. So housing is more expensive because of supply. And then forget about the costs, construction costs even since twenty twenty. The c- increase is not only supply pressure, but now it's construction cost pressure. So it's, it's a difficult, um, calculus when you come to affordable housing. And the idea that we're ever gonna get to affordable housing without new tools. It's, that's part of the reason why the state has gone into this mode of requiring communities, to add these tools to their zoning code. So I'm sorry, I probably should have started this one before I went to those, um, tools that we had looked back in twenty nineteen. Because this kinda gives you the background of why, um, the Planning Commission was motivated to look at those code changes in twenty nineteen. So, and this is the, the list that really kind of resulted from, those bleak numbers and the state mandate to increase densities.
Travis, I s- I just had to close, I noticed that your laptop's running out of juice. Do you, laptops running out of battery?
Oh, that one is?
Yeah.
Oh, and it shouldn't be plugged in.
It's almost.
Okay, so did you have any other questions about this one?
So this went to the city council, and they didn't do a second reading. Why?
So if I remember correctly, it was at, right after an election. And there were several new council members who, were reluctant to adopt something without having been involved in the process and the discussion. And, um, at the time, I think there were planning, there wasn't a full Planning Commission. So they felt that, um, they didn't have a lot of faith in the process. And so it just, somebody made a motion, there was no second, and it just kind of died. And was never brought up again.
So it wasn't relevant or necessary to bring it up again?
Yeah, so really, it just never got reassigned to the Planning Commission to forward a recommendation again. Or theoretically, the council could bring it up at any time. Um, and that's why I keep digging it out, is because we did a lot of this work. And ne- there have been several changes, but we really might be able to dust off that ordinance. And might only have to change, you know, two or three sections. And a lion's share of this required state mandate may already be done. And it may already have, you know, ha- been vetted by the community. So it's time to, you know, redo that discussion, make sure that the community is still on board, and then make a recommendation to the council.
Is that something you wanna do by next, by next month also?
Uh, well, and so. Well, and like I said, you could take a look at the ordinance that was back then. And I'm essentially telling you right now that that stuff in red, literally, I could bring it back to you, and you could make a recommendation on tha- on those things at the next meeting. Because ninety percent of the work is done. Now granted, I think Sharon and Brian, you were here for that discussion, but the other, um, three Planning Commission members weren't here, and they may not be comfortable without having that full discussion.
Okay, and we've got some new council members coming on in January again too.
Yes, yep. And so a December recommendation will go to a new council, so maybe you wanna have that conversation in, um, we were talking about having a retreat with the Planning Commission and the council in January. So maybe it's something you want in, maybe I could do a shorter version of this at the retreat. And then in January, after you had a chance to spend twenty minutes talking to them about it, get some direction and l- listen to it in January instead of December. But, I mean, between now and January, there's no reason why I shouldn't be able to, re-edit ordinance fourteen eighty and give it a new number, and see if you wanna tackle it in January. And that's kinda why I've been sending it to you for the last two or three months, just to remind you that, this, and frankly, I'll be honest with you, this is probably the lion's share of the work, that the state law is gonna require us to do. And it may seem daunting, but really, given the fact that what I presented today, it's not all that inconsistent with what Woodland has found acceptable before. There's a lot of stuff on that list that we didn't even bother talking about, cause we don't need to worry about it, but.
Yeah, I think sounds, that sounds like a plan.
You want that in January?
You're doing it in January, yeah.
Great.
So Travis, I like to wrap these up by nine.
Okay.
I don't know if we can sprint to the finish, but I'd, I would like to.
Yeah, and this, this was the last of the meaty one, we can probably do these last couple in, before eight, they're, uh, probably before quarter till. Like we did the first few, the rest of these are relatively simple. So the eleven-ten is the version that we just talked about. This one is, uh, State Bill fifty-two ninety. It is local project review, and it talks about required code amendments that need to streamline the process. Woodland City Code is a mishmash of stuff from the nineties through stuff that we've tried to collect and, correct in the last eight years since I've been here. Um, the reason why we have a retooling our code program is because I've been keeping, an Excel spreadsheet of every spelling mistake and stupid comment. And, you know, stupid code section that need to be fixed for the last eight years. And we've been trying to fix this here and there. Every year, we try and do a batch, and we haven't been successful the last two years, but, um, there are a lot of unnecessary delays in the code that don't even meet current state standards. So, um, this is going to be a relatively simple discussion, cause it's like, do I really need to take ninety days to review something when I can do it in ten weeks? Or eight weeks, right? We are not such a big jurisdiction that we need to take, you know, full timelines to get stuff done. So it's not that big of an issue to address this. So, this may be something that's very helpful for the development community, but, we're already beating our deadlines, I don't think we need to make it a priority for you to tell me, to continue to do good customer service. I will do it whether it's in the code or not, I'm already beating the deadlines, whether you change the deadlines or not. We have six months to tackle these issues, if we do this on month five, I'm still gonna beat the, the deadlines regardless of whether you tell me to or not, so. So unless you want that in December, I, if, do you mind me moving that to March or April?
I don't mind.
Okay. So the next one is, um, actually, if you don't mind, I'm gonna move to this last one. House Bill twelve ninety-three, it has specific requirements for design review standards. And since we do not have a design review requirement for single fam- or for, uh, multi-family residential, we will have to have a discussion about whether we wanna add that to our code. I don't know that we have to add this. But it may be something that you want to do in the future, so. Low priority, cause it doesn't apply to us, but, um.
Are you, is the design review referring to something like an archil- sorry, an architectural review thing where you're looking at, roof modulations and that type of thing?
Yes, and we currently have that type of architectural review in our commercial zone. We want windows, we want, we don't want big blank walls. We want landscaping, we want broken-up lines and roof lines. So we have that in our commercial zone, but we don't in our residential zone. And if you wanna talk affordability, that's another one of these growth management things that.
I think residential construction kinda polices itself, people don't wanna buy ugly houses.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, one person's, one person's sense of beauty is different from another, so I get, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm kind of one of those, market sets it. Cause if you don't like the d- design, you're not gonna buy in the neighborhood, and that's just kind of the reality, so. Um, and then the other one is, again, I am not sure it's all that applicable to us, but the state now mandates that there are, if there are existing vacant commercial and residential, that the code has to allow for conversion of those to residential. And I haven't di- I haven't dove into this, cause frankly, I don't know that we have any buildings that qualify for it. So it might be another one of these code sections that we have to adopt it. Somebody else has invented the wheel, but we're not gonna use that wheel, so. The fact that we have to adopt it, it may be something that I'm gonna ask you to hold your noses while you, knuckle under to the man in this case, so. I don't know that we necessarily wanna dive into that tonight, just simply cause we can get out of here.
Getting out sound good. Okay?
Okay, so if you don't have any other questions, I don't have anything else for you.
Alright. Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Does, does anybody else have any comments, lady, gentleman?
All three of you? I moved, we adjourned.
Oh, second.
Wondering if I have to say something else?
Yeah, adjourn.
Uh, the Planning Commission for the City of Woodland is now adjourned at eight forty-five PM.
Good job, Brian.
Oh, I struggle whenever I have to do this. Dave's much better at it.
And Brian, I have a recommendation letter for the fire impact fee, if you will sign that before you go. Thank you, and, and so I assumed that you were gonna make a recommendation as written?
Yes.
And so. Thank you very much.